I'd like to call the Board of Education meeting to order.
I would like to say this is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to call this again. Here are the sitting members, Trusha and Member Bark.
Yeah, we'll move to the agenda. I'm asking that we be a little flexible. I have to start from Bill Nelson and Ralph. He obviously can do our external audit report, so I'd like to swipe that in whenever we want to get set. Any objections to that?
That, we have moved to celebrations of learning.
Good evening. I'm delighted tonight to present to you Celebrate Hope. It is an exciting presentation that we have partnered with. And they have entered into this amazing partnership with the Student Support Services Department. Their presentation will provide overview of the programs to take engage the district in terms of offering support to parents and educators to create an environment of social and emotional help. With that, I would take the cigarette to John Paul.
Thank you, Board, for allowing us to be here this evening. We really appreciate the opportunity to share with you the work that we've been doing in Waterford Schools. And we're just excited about this. So, a little bit about who we are. My name is Lisa Goria, this is John Paul. We are the co-founders of Celebrate Hope. We are both certified social and emotional intelligence coaches. We're also certified in the area of trauma as level one providers. We do work with schools, we do work with corporate environments, we do work with nonprofit agencies, all surrounding this social and emotional intelligence piece. John and I are both parents of children with unique special needs. And so Celebrate Hope was really created out of a place of love for our children and out of frustration for some of the significant challenges that John and I found ourselves going through as we were trying to find not only help for our children, but also ourselves as parents. So, we have created Celebrate Hope based on a couple key components. One of the first being is that we, as parents of children with special needs, need to be in relationship with other parents that give it. One diagnosis to another, we know looks different, but we understand that there's a common thread that binds us all. We need to be in judgment-free zones with other parents that once again are supportive of each unique journey that we're on. We also understand the need to meet each other exactly where we're at in our journey of parenting these children. We offer support and care for those that are being different in the society that we live in. And we recognize that each and every one of us, especially those that we feel society may marginalize, need to be seen, heard, and loved. That's what Celebrate Hope has been so.
So, our intention is that we improve systematic health through teaching and empowering educators to work with special needs students and parents, through the whole philosophy of social and emotional intelligence is the foundation of that. And this systematic approach for both educators and parents is utilized in order to improve relationships, to build trust, to teach about empathy and healthy communication, which is so essential and necessary, especially with working with a sensitive population, as well as understanding reciprocal responsibility of being in relationship with each other. And in addition to that, this is probably most important, and we have found just a great delight in Waterford Schools under the leadership of Nadine, of eliminating this us versus them mentality and becoming less combatant as we come together for the ultimate purpose of delivering good services for the child. And then taking ownership of our own emotions and normalizing them as we go through those and experience those with parents, as well as educators, and then seeing each other as individuals. The long-term goal is to provide this kind of support to Student Support Services Department.
So, the partnership that we entered into began in April 2017 upon solicitation related to Nadine, where she reached out to us based upon some surveys that she had issued to the parent population to find out some areas that an advanced level of support could be offered. She also looked at a level of care that she felt the parents could benefit from that they currently were not receiving.
So, up until this point in time, just so that we can review a little bit about where we've been together, we started off with a seminar in Finding Hope, that's our foundational seminar that we offer to parents. There were two that was contracted, both in September of 17 as well as 18. And we addressed issues such as trauma, grief, acceptance, hope, building new support systems and coping skills with the ultimate intention of, especially for those that have children with special needs, we end up with a child and have to reconstruct a new dream in the life of not only the child, but also our lives as parents and families. We followed that systematically with monthly support gatherings. Up until this point in time, there have been 17 that have been contracted. From October 17 to June of 2019, that will carry over, of course, into next year, which provides an educational component as well as support building. We just had one this morning, in fact, that was very successful. Parents' Socia's, this is another key component in making sure that we're servicing our families in a healthy way. This is predominantly offered as a low entry point for families that is a little bit more sensitive and less intimidating, predominantly so with work that we have done. We find, too, that these social opportunities provide opportunities for dads to get engaged, whereas they may not necessarily do so, which is a key component of any family system. And then last summer, we had, July of 18, a summer picnic, which was a huge success with the ability to meet each other's families and bring us all together. And then in addition to that, there are quarterly meetings that have been planned with the Parent Advisory Committee to further gauge the needs and the success there.
There's just a couple pictures. This is our summer picnic. I don't know what that looks like. We've included some of the survey comments. When we do our Finding Hope seminar, we always issue surveys to get feedback from the parents on how they're feeling the materials that are received and what their thoughts are. So, here's some of the comments that we've received from them. And then as far as the work that we are doing for the educational teams, we've got a couple different things. August of 2017, we did a seminar called "The Value of Empathy in the Educational Environment." This was really cool because it was directed towards your parapoles and also your transportation department. And what it allowed us to do is connect with anyone that is a frontliner for these children and allow them to understand empathy at a much deeper level and to also be able to look at the situations that not only these kids go through with different months, but also the parents and then also their coworkers. So, we're trying to make everyone step outside of their comfort zone to see each other at a different level. And then in March of 2018, we did a seminar on the role of healthy communication that was given to your parapoles and a couple of things that we talked about there. It's just really teaching about listening, how to be an effective listener, a skillful listener, and also being able to create the right environment for sharing. Once again, we hand out surveys every time we are in front of an audience. When we do a workshop, here's some of the survey comments that came back from your parapoles and your transportation department. What's a group of people that you have working for your district? So...
Yeah, just sort of quick, too, I'll say briefly. It was a pleasure to be able to hear some of the feedback from your parapoles, as well as your transportation department, and comments like, "This means so much that we would be invested in and in this level." So, thank you for providing that opportunity to them. So, the current status of where we're at, as I mentioned, there was a parent support gathering that was held this morning, and we discussed the importance of emotional intimacy, of being connected with each other, engaging wherever we're at, not only in our own personal lives, but also with educators. November the 6th, we will be present for a professional development day, providing a seminar on social and emotional intelligence for educators. And then that will be followed up with a seminar on driving down high turnover for parapoles, which is a systemic problem in most school districts because of the high stress that non-parapole space.
So, why are we still here? We absolutely believe that we're making a difference. It truly is a privilege to serve the parents that we are serving and the educators that we are able to be in front of. We feel that we're continually addressing the needs of both these populations, and we feel that healthy environments are really starting to take shape in ways that we are seeing enhanced growth. The parents are definitely developing a deeper level of trust with us. Relationship building takes time, and it takes the ability to recognize that, yes, we do have a lot of similarities with our struggles that we go through as parents. We're walking this with them. And they're also looking at us for guidance. So, that's very telling that we are onto something that they're... The parents are developing new sculpey, coping skills. We see that taking place, and we see that educators are learning how to relate on the level. We'd like to invite Jessica Humphrey up here now. She is a representative of the PACT Committee, and she's going to read a little statement.
Jessica, um, forgive me if I get a little emotional. This is actually, it's really important to me, and I'm pretty anxious about it. So, I had my first experience with Lisa and John Slavonov a couple of years ago when I came to Waterford. At first, I was skeptical. I didn't want to talk about my personal experiences and my feelings, especially with these strangers. Then I had the pleasure of seeing the Finding Hope seminar, and they were so personal and open, and it started to make sense. We are not strangers. While we might not know each other personally yet, we walk a similar path, and that can be enough to bring us together. So, I was so excited when we were bringing Celebrate Hope to Waterford finally to the memory of it. I knew that the parents who had these meetings will get so much out of it, and I knew we were not wrong. I look forward to our meetings each month. I always walk out with a renewed sense of confidence, not just in myself as a person, but in myself as a parent. While I'd love to hopefully find out lessons that John and Lisa raised for our meetings, which are aimed at helping us be our best selves, so that we can give our kids our very best. My favorite part of our meetings is the beginning, when it takes at least a half hour to get filled lessons. It's where two easy chatting and catching up and sharing stories, because it's such a short time that we can truly become friends. Some of these friendships have started to transcend our meetings and turn into truly supportive and understated friendships that can really make a difference in someone's life. And it's really made a difference in mine, and for that, I am very grateful for the schoolwork. I want to thank the district, I want to thank Student Support Services, and send out, I'm grateful. Thank you.
Any questions that we can...
Any questions for John or Lisa or Jessica? John Paul?
Just want to thank you for the work that you're doing. It sounds fantastic, and the testament that was just given, but it was probably the thing that I saw, you know, immediately struck me was creating this network of parents of like-minded, regardless of, you know, those of us that have kids and they have any challenges in their life. There's really nothing like it when you're able to connect with a parent that's facing the same challenges. It's just a whole different level. So, thank you for your work that you're doing. One of the things that you had mentioned, that you had done a seminar on, was hoping maybe you could just give me a little bit of a nutshell or some information about driving down the high turnover rate for parapoles. That's something that we do struggle with, and so one of the things that I feel is that kids, especially students and kids with disabilities, who need consistency and keeping, you know, stable parapoles and aids to the teachers is extremely important.
So, a big portion of our work as it relates to that seminar, we always try to normalize. So, understanding that this is a high-stress environment for the parapoles, normalizing their feelings so that they're not internalizing that, boy, it could be an insufficiency on my part, or, you know, perhaps I need to look for a different career, they start reevaluating. So, we want to bring them back to their love, why they entered into the field, and then help them learn the coping skills that are already in place. So, building the support system with the people that understand their journey best, which is their coworkers. So, we do a lot of intensive work around imagine what that looks like, so that they can draw upon support from each other, but then also some other things like finding healthy balance in their lives, that if they're living a life like this, where, you know, everything's in one basket, something's going to suffer greatly over here. So, we teach about balance, we also teach about flexibility, about truly living in the moment. So, we don't want to go too far down the road and anticipate and worry about things that may be happening next week or even next year, living today. So, if today is a bad day, it's a bad day just for today. We're going to get up with a renewed sense of confidence and enter the day tomorrow.
A lot of that has to do with the fact, as Lisa had mentioned, too, the normalization of the human psyche and what they're experiencing here at work, of giving them the space to be able to say, you know, there is no shame and guilt in what you're feeling, what you experienced, but it's a matter of how you're dealing with that and how you're creating a system of support, as Lisa had mentioned, in the midst of some of those challenges professionally.
Thank you.
Again, excuse me, I want to echo the appreciation for such an invaluable opportunity as the adult sibling of two special needs brothers and sisters who are now adults working in a waterford school district. I think that inclusion piece and being able to be surrounded by other people who are experiencing what you're experiencing, maybe not, like you said, not the exact same challenges, but it can be a very isolating experience, and not just for parents, but for siblings as well. And those are challenges that are going to last forever into adulthood. And so, I think that the development of those friendships and those connections, those interpersonal connections are just critical as children grow and move into adulthood. And I'm just grateful to see that this is available to parents. You know, we had some things like that, you know, like the reminders to a little, but certainly, I think society as a whole has become far more appreciative and far more inclusive than it was for some years ago. So, I'm really appreciative of that.
Thank you so much. John?
At the risk of gushing, I do want to reiterate the same comments that my fellow board members had said and to thank you for what you bring to our school community through this collaboration. I'm so proud of this district for thinking outside the box, for being creative, and for recognizing that by collaborating with other people, we can have an even better solution and can provide more support, more programs, more opportunities for our students. The comments that you made, we know that our buses, we call our buses our first classroom of the day. And we recognize that our transportation personnel and our parents have a very important role in relationships with our students. And so, I couldn't be more proud that they embraced this and came to this with that open mind and that collaborative approach as well, because I think that speaks volumes about our staff members and about our school district. I'm also really struck by, there was a few tenants that you pointed out at the beginning. The first one, the first one's being a common thread that binds us all, a judgment-free zone, meet each other wherever we're at, support and care for one another, and they need to be seen, heard, and loved. And I'm so struck by those, you know, at the very beginning, at the introduction, but that as a foundation for every relationship, for everything that we do, is the most profound, fundamental foundation that we can build, and it allows everything else that we do. And we have those social and emotional learning and healthy environment. Everything else that we do, we can flourish in with that as a foundation. So, I just, you know, Ms. Humphrey's beautiful statement where she says, "I gave the confidence to myself as a person and as a parent." I'm not sure that there's a better testament to the work that's happened, Nadine, than that. So, just thank you all for the work and for the commitment and the collaboration. It's fantastic.
Thank you, that means a lot.
Any other questions? Thank you, John, thank you, Lisa. Thank you so much. We appreciate what you're doing. Thank you, Nadine, for bringing it up to us. Next, we move to action items, or we're going to move to a partial roof replacement.
Right up, we're, well, I can't, we want to say we're up to bid because we were up to bid. First, we will, you'll find this in action tonight because of the timelines of what we need to spend before winter sets in. We're going to replace 18,000 square feet at Durant High School, the roof there, and 8,250 square feet at Pierce. So, in just a little while, we'll go for action, and I'll discuss who will be winning, but I'll ask.
Any questions for John as well? Next, Cabinet, point sales.
Yes, as over the years, when we originally started the point sales system, we're trying to guessing, maybe seven years ago, we were finding that we need 27 new computers at all the stations. This is where the kids check out through the line, and we need to replace all of our computers. So, we're out to bid for that, and we'll bring in action, and we're moving on November 1st.
Questions for John? Thank you. This is the Head Start budget. Head Start budgets provided to the Board of Education for review. We approve on the one for Head Start, and also the recommendation for approval. They presented that on November 1st. Next, we move to audience comments on action items. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to address the court on any action items? With that, we move to the approval minutes.
It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the September 20th, 2018 regular meeting. I assume you've...
Been moved and supported on the comments or questions? Close your favor. Close motion passes six zero. Account payable.
It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the check, lunch, lunch, and transfer register for the month of September 2018 as listed on pages one through 163, and the fifth third account statement listed on pages one through four. Invoices have been processed by accounts payable and purchasing per requisition submitted by various departments. All are within the prescribed budget allocations, and I assume.
It's been moved and supported. Any comments or questions? Close your favor. Close motion passes six zero.
Order is in receipt of the statement of revenue and expenditures for the three months ending September of 2018.
Next, we move to new business.
Superintendent's recommendation 37-18-19, retirements, resignations, lethal absence, expirations. It is recommended the Board of Education accept the following resignations, retirements, as presented. I assume.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any comments or questions? Close your favor. Close motion passes six zero.
Superintendent's recommendation 38-18-19, teaching contract changes and appointments. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the teaching contract changes and appointments for the 2018-2019 school year, as presented. I assume.
It's been moved and supported. Any comments or questions? Close your favor. Close motion passes six zero.
Superintendent's recommendation 39-18-19, National School Lunch Week. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the resolution presented in recognition and support of National School Lunch Week, October 15 through the 19, 2018. I assume.
It's been moved and supported. Any comments or questions?
I just want to commend our Food Service Department on every level. We are the envy, not just of Oakland County Food Service, but, and not just the state of Michigan. It is national recognition that our fabulous staff has received, and I'm also really grateful that we still serve turkey's love.
Thank you. It should be known that they also, they serve breakfast, you know, and just lunch. And more, they serve meals all summer long, and so they're a great staff. We appreciate that. Close your favor. Close motion passes six zero.
Superintendent's recommendation 40-18-19, National School Bus Safety Week Resolution. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the resolution presented in recognition and support of the School Bus Safety Week, October 22 through 26, 2018. I assume.
It's been moved and supported. Any comments or questions?
I just wanted to recognize our bus drivers. I know this beginning of the school year was not ideal, but I did have an opportunity about two years ago to go do a ride-along with the bus drivers. And in that ride-along, it was a very eye-opening experience. I really wasn't sure what to expect, but when I did the ride-along, I saw how involved these bus drivers are with our students' lives. They're not only providing transportation, they're providing counseling, they're involved with families, they're helping the kids work through problems. In some instances, they're a friend to talk to, and they're very involved and they're very caring towards our students. So, I think this is a great recognition of them. I have an enormity of respect for them. I was reading some of the information in the Michigan Association of School Board bylaws, information that I'm going to be going to the Michigan Association of School Boards conference next month. And in there, they talked about the importance of transportation, and about approximately 50% of students in a school district actually ride the bus. So, it's a huge and immense operation to take on. So, you know, I give kudos to our bus drivers. I saw the hard work that they do, day in, day out, two years ago on that ride-along where they work with any of our special needs kids. And they really provide, beyond just transportation, a great service and duty to our district.
Thank you. John?
I just want to add to that. I 100% agree, and then just add in our mechanics, our supervisors, and our school transportation personnel that help to coordinate those routes and to facilitate what can be sometimes a harrowing process. So, just a fantastic recommendation, and our immense respect and admiration goes out to the entire department.
Certainly, thank you to their staff that starts the kids' day in and the kids' day out, and we impact on our families. Close your favor. Close motion passes six zero.
Superintendent's recommendation 41-18-19, National Principals Month Resolution. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the resolution presented in recognition and support of National Principals Month, October 2018. I assume.
It's been moved and supported.
Recognizing our principals as well, the hard work that they do. I think all the board up here has realized how much effort that they put into their jobs on a day-in, day-out basis, those buildings, dealing with kids, not just the elementary principals, but also middle school and the high school principals. So, an enormity of respect for them. And also, too, one of our own board members, Ms. Bargat, is a former principal here in the district. So, kudos to her as well. I think every year when this comes up, I always kind of give her the kudos because she is retired, but she did serve 24 years in the district and was the Mesqua Principal of the Year for the 7th District a few years ago. Congratulations to all the principals.
Heather?
Just want to thank all our principals for the steadfast leadership we provide for your buildings and the, really, the culture and the tone that you set. We cannot do it without you, and we appreciate your leadership and your commitment to our kids and our community and our district.
Sorry, but I would be remiss if I didn't add comments as well, because we see a couple of our wonderful principals in the audience, and we had an opportunity to hear so much about what happens within a... and we had an opportunity to hear so much about what happens within a building on a day-to-day basis. There's a paragraph in here that says, "Whereas principals are expected to be educational visionaries, instructional leaders, assessment experts, disciplinarians, community builders, public relations experts, budget analysts, facility managers, special program administrators and guardians of various legal, contractual, policy mandates and initiatives, as well as being entrusted with the educational and development of young people, the most valuable resource." That's mouthful and I do think we see evidence of that every single day with our principals in our buildings. And they have so many hats that they wear always, always with a precision focus on our most valuable resource, which is our young students. So this is honestly a well-deserved heartfelt resolution and we thank you for what you do every single day for our students, for our schools and for our community.
Thank you.
Quick, I'll just echo in as well too. My daughter, Ms. Bargan, her principal, you know, Jammy Carton was just loved by the kids at Boma when she was here. And I think back to a few months ago, at commencement, Jeff Francoy, who was a former principal of Carrick. You know, she had him and the young lady who was doing the speech, the graduating senior, she brought up Jeff Francoy's name. In that place erupted from parents and from kids. And I remember Jeff always saying that he wanted to make, you know, the building, the school and atmosphere where kids wanted to come, they wanted to be there. And that was kind of his thing to do and he certainly did that and our principals do do that. So kudos to all of them. It's not an easy job. It's a lot of hours, a lot of responsibility and just thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say here, that's why I had my thanks certainly as we go into buildings. Because this place is building the principal's office and it's not always maybe it's a certain thing. It happens when I say things. I know if you drive by any of our board of buildings that got our late night, early in the morning or in the week, it probably belongs to the building principal. So for that, we truly thank you.
All's your favor. Close motion passes six zero. I see you and we're ready. We can move to a yell and yell here.
Thank you.
David, you brought, called your brother.
I have, sure.
Called that traffic.
Oh, please, I felt a little bit of that and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
So this is the information on our external reporting. We're going to handle this.
Good evening, sorry to get a little bit late. Oh, well, tonight, as always, a busy time here. And I think we have a class. Is that right? I think it's nice, we have a lot of good news tonight, so. Well, first off, I'd like to thank you all, Kathy Yon-Yo, and really appreciate the opportunity to be your auditor. And also the guys that there never appears now, certainly to Danielle and Bill for all their hard work to get us to this point. I think we have, these all have a lot to be proud of, administration, the board, a lot of good news in our report that you do. So I think just have a little bit to talk about. We were trending very positive, so with that. We reached a call on unmodified opinion. It's the highest level of assurance we can give in an audit. It's a clean audit. That's what you're looking for us, so everything is properly stated in the courts, generally accepted by county principals. And it's a clean audit, that's what you want from us. So highest level assurance we can give. Taking a look at our governmental funds, and this is a balance sheet. It's a snap sheet, starting minus from June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. Three major funds this year, the general fund, two thousand sixteen, series two, two thousand sixteen, series three as well. And then our non-major funds, which include school services fund, food service, debt service, and some capital pockets fund as well. Non-special center program. General fund made up primarily of cash, amounts due from the state and federal government, fifteen point eight million there, fourteen point five in cash. And overall, our assets actually went down a little bit this year, about eight hundred thousand, thirty-two point four. Our liabilities, you'll note this year, twenty-five point two, down three million dollars. So your assets went down, our liabilities went down more. One point five million, that was the state aid borrowed, we actually borrowed less money this year, paid less interest out. So moving that in the right direction as well. So it was fifteen million a year ago, down to one point five. What's left of our savings account, our fund balance, what we have there is we've got some money set aside for non-spendables. That's money we spent this year, it's going to be used in the next fiscal year, those cashes, the prepaid expenses and inventory costs. And then we have the assigned dollars for capital leases and things like that for the future technology. So that's set aside money for the kind of set aside for that, leaving us above six point three million on the assigned fund balance. Series two and series three are both relatively new. They have a little bit more activity in series two, sitting with about forty-four points, five million dollars in cash, one two point four million accounts payable. Fund balance of forty-two million. We need to see basically cash to the fund balance in series here, which is just as low.
Can I, if I brought you a question, Amanda, that's where you want to hold a question.
Sure.
Just relative to the series two bond and forty-two million there, that's because it's been authorized by the board as a draw, but it has not been spent yet?
Correct. It started, series two has started, been spent already. Series three has not, has been drawn and not spent at all yet. Because again, this is June thirtieth.
Right.
Some of that activity, more activity that happened over the summer. We also have series four, it's twenty million dollars, we can issue for more time down the road, so.
Would you see series four on the balance sheet like this if the board had approved it? Or does it wait, do you wait until there's an expenditure against it?
No, if the board had approved it, it would have.
Be on you, okay.
Yeah, this is our money to do what will be the board has said we have to do with it.
Perfect, that's what I thought, I just want to make sure.
Definitely. Our operating statement, our revenues, our revenues, expenditures and changes in fund balance this year. General fund revenues at plus seven hundred thousand, expenditures at plus three hundred thousand. Overall, we had a great year. Added two point one million to fund balance. There's good news. Also, a lot of still unfilled positions, we have been able to find the talent out there to fill some of the positions we've had open for a long time. But again, two point one million dollars, given the challenge we had, it's really positive. You see they added the fund balance total of seven point one, then you can see the non-spendable in the assigned part, set aside already, leaving us with that six point three. And again, you see there's series two, we spent about eight million dollars, that's fifty million dollars so far. We're auditing that as we go, using some testing compliance and so on that. We test, every year we test transactions within the bond program, making sure we're in compliance every year. There's a footnote set there following those compliance. And you can see just the cost of the series three, really the issuance cost of where it is there.
Can I ask you another question?
Sure.
So before we turn the page on this.
Absolutely.
The non-spendable and the assigned, so we go from seven point one to the six point three.
Correct.
Can you give me an example of what the difference between those two is?
Okay, it's seven point one, six point three. So the non-spendable is money like the prepaid expenses. So you've paid some money this year, it's going to be used in the next fiscal year, but it's not accrued in this year. So maybe it's a twelve-month insurance policy that renews in, say, March. So you've only got three months.
And applies the portion.
Yeah, so you can't spend that in anything else but non-spendable. It's already been spent for the districts and that's for a future benefit or a future outlay. And then the assigned is money that's set aside for the capital. I was like looking at the budget, but I sit down and look at my bill, don't estimate the actual where it comes out at. And again, revenues are down about one percent, that's pretty consistent across the industry. We have a lot of federal grants that we get, we did a number of federal grants here, we have a lot of federal money. As of June thirtieth, when you do your budget amendment at the end of June, it's our best guess. We haven't got all the costs and we close out the books over August and go on audit in September. So a lot of transactions will come in at that time. Typically, most basic budget for all of revenues and then those monies are used, if not used at that point, there's no expenditures incurred with those and it's used in the next fiscal year. So for those, the grants are operated from the state, typically the federal governments. So there's September thirty, you're at mostly June, so we have some extra time to use those. So you'll always see revenues a little bit short. And because of the revenue short, the expenses would be short as well. And again, the three percent variance there is again, almost, almost all is related to unfilled positions really. We'll get some of that as well as that unspent federal dollars. I think you feel good about what we've done here, you know, here, it's been a lot of challenges we faced this year. And really, when you look at the budget variance, it's about two percent. And so that's pretty close when you look at a hundred million dollar budget. So taking a look at our revenue, where we're getting our money from, again, we talk about the state, federal government. We do get over seven million dollars from just the general fund, we do get some more money for food service as well. Seven percent of that, seventy-four percent of our dollars coming from the state and fourteen local, so we've mostly property taxes in there. Integrated street dollars, about five percent, almost percent is actually stayed exactly the same from here over here, which is kind of a trend of that. And it's, I've seen that almost, you know, three or four different districts I've worked with already, those revenue numbers have been pretty fixed.
Can I ask you one more question?
Yep.
I think the local piece of that, am I correct in saying that's the non-homestud portion of our tax base that stays here in Warren?
Yeah, and then the total, you know, you guys get about eight thousand, I wish.
So.
Yeah, I wish, right? Well, you guys have the second lowest, or in the second tier, the lowest slide in our score from the state of Michigan. So they usually back up your property taxes from that and then the rest is filled with state aid. So usually collect a lot of taxes, maybe a less state aid, but it's still the same money. And if it's important, remember, you know, we compare ourselves to the other areas in the county and even our neighbors, we're not getting quite as much money this year. Just look at our revenue trend in two thousand fourteen, we did a bond refunding of about seven point six million, that's why that number is quite a bit higher than the other years. So we do see that in the revenue expense side. Overall, revenues grew by about point seven percent this year.
Sorry, that's the twenty fourteen, fifteen bond refinancing, which is.
Yeah, less than.
Yeah, we refunded our, we refinanced, we call it refunding.
I remember, well.
We refinanced, I think, to save us an eight or nine million dollars in interest.
Vetcha.
Yeah.
High five.
Yeah. Yeah, see, tax payers.
Vetcha.
General expenditures this year, if you look at what we're spending on employee benefits and salaries, we're eighty-two percent of our employers, employee costs, that's consistent here over here. Again, purchase services, we're sitting about ninety-three percent, that's up one percent this year. So ninety-three percent of our costs are pretty much fixed in people and services that we need are direct. Supplies is down to four percent. And we did have a little bit of technology this year, it's been about one percent on the Capoplate, which is equipment and technology related. So small pieces that aren't able to be funded with the bonds that we have. You do have to buy some of that stuff out of general, this year it's about one percent. Very hot.
Yeah, very hot. So that ninety-three percent of our costs, if you add those together, are for our employee costs and benefits and services. So that went down percent or?
Up one.
It went up?
It was ninety-two a year ago.
Okay. We actually like that, we want to get more money from this.
Yeah.
And we're able to free that up from the other expenses is a very good thing, I just want to point that out, that's a powerful thing.
And again, we're spending a little bit less in supplies because of that, you just only can do what you can do.
Yeah, exactly, we understand that.
And you see the savings, I think, in our expenditures slide here, again, that's seven point six million dollars on the fourteen fifteen, to save us a lot of money there. Again, interest rates are rising now, so again, those revenues are going away, those opportunities, we've done a good job of taking advantage of that. We've issued a lot of bonds and those little rates are just fantastic, that's a great cost on us. Overall, expenditures increased point two percent this year, so compared to revenues of point seven, it's less than one percent, both really basically combined. I like to look at it per people basis, this is how I just evaluate things, I love all the students, I love all the kids. Again, how much are we spending per people and how much are we, you're taking in per people? And again, we have a very healthy trend. Four years in a row, we've added fund balance and had modest increases. You brought us up all the way up from one point one percent to six point four percent. At times, where you have time enrollment, our state funding has been going up a little bit, but again, we're still in the bottom tier there. And it's just incredible work you guys have done, not only as administration, as a board, and as citizens, you have to make, explore, it's been great. And again, this district, I mean, I guess it's just turned the page. And the challenges you face, you just talked about how you driven your student health. Declining was really a structural deficit almost. One of the best factors we have, and we look at it every year, so I guess that, we've done a great job from start to finish. And that trend is really, really good. Again, this trend is great, we like more kids, but the financial piece has been very, very strong the last four years. And this kind of speaks to it too, again, we wrote this line here a couple of years ago as we're kind of looking at our unassigned fund balance and at one point one million. Going all the way up to just under, just up to about five percent last year. Again, we talk about early warning legislation, which is five percent of certain revenues. And that's a little bit lower than what's been our benchmark, and now we're above that five percent. We well had that early warning legislation that could impact us. So again, a good impact here is able to see where you come from where it is now, that's just fantastic.
I'd like to point out, I mean, Danielle's pointed out this too many times, if you go back to the last slide. Picture that one being superimposed and go to the next slide. So you see the declining moment? And look forward. And look at the fund balance. They're going in opposite directions. I mean, the one we don't want, we both want to hold them up, but at the same time, the decisions that have been made by this district to put us in this financial position with the headwinds that we've had are amazing. We're above, we're way above the early warning, as Dave said, we're way above the early warning legislation. Two years in a row now. And, you know, we're just, you know, we're heading north on fund balance, you know, one of the things the board said is, I want to see higher fund balance. You saw when Dave was talking about liabilities, short-term borrowing. Short-term borrowing, it was six and a half, sixteen and a half million up on time, interest rates are coming up. So sixteen and a half million, then it went down to fifteen or fifteen and a half. You see on these financials, it's thirteen and a half, you know, the borrowing that you just approved was for nine point seven. So we're absolutely headed in the right direction. These are amazing results. And the one thing we won't have up here is a budget, we're doing so much better than even budget, so this is a good performance. I like this chart right here showing where we've been, you know, we're on one point one, and we're doing this all along, but the state of Michigan has us at the bottom of funding.
Any questions for the financial piece before I go to the compliance section?
I just want to reiterate some statements that were made, I think it is impressive when you look at the student enrollment, the decline, but yet because of decisions that the district has made, we've been able to keep this fund balance, we've been able to raise it. And it's kind of super important, putting things like that, and I put, and I just thought that that was extremely impressive. You know, thank you just for the whole work, thank you board for the work, and it looks, Danielle, you know, it's fantastic. It's heading in the right direction. Like, as student enrollment go off, like, you know, it's, that's something that is in many ways outside of our control and something that many districts are suffering from, outside of.
It's hard work.
It's hard. Not to be a total bummer, because I think there was a lot of hard work and tough decisions that were made to keep us afloat. But is a part of this, and I assume it is, also attributed to the economy. I mean, the economy kind of went boom, it kind of went boom, the economy's going good, we're going up. Is that happening in a lot of school districts? And again, I don't want to say that's just because and nobody did anything because we've, again, been a part of some very tough decisions and our employees took a heckuva lot of cuts to keep this district afloat. I was in an indirect relationship to that too, because again, since the economy's doing so well, we can't find people to fill those spots. So we're not having the people we originally would like in our budget to help with our kids. So those go unfilled because there's opportunities out there and maybe, again, I've seen a lot of movement this year, more movement than I've seen in a lot of years. Because there's opportunities, we have modest increases from the state and we have an end of month for zero funding that we have in the past. So at least getting something to help that, and I think the indirect match for sure, for sure that way. The student trend is, some were great and, you know, there's a few who're good still. And then there's districts in Oakland County that are growing though, so I mean, there are kids there, so. I don't think it's directly introduced a little bit, certainly that helps.
I would like to say on the economy side, while the economy is going up and up, our inflation record is not matched. We haven't even kept up with the rate of inflation. So regardless of what the economy is doing, this does not reflect, you know, a good economy because we're still at the bottom of the funding mechanism that state has in place since April's late. Because of that, we've had to face many headwinds and it's not keeping up with inflation and most of the revenue that's coming in is basically going to unfunded mandate, or not mandates, but unfunded obligations. The pension fund and the healthcare portion of the pension fund is what, forty-three million or something like that? So a lot of our money is going right to that, so a good economy is going mostly to that and a little bit left over coming to schools, but it's not keeping up with the rate of inflation. So the reflection on this is, these are decisions were made by the district, you know, not because of the economy, because we're not getting a share of the economy that, you know, that others are.
Yeah, if we were taxed on, let's say, you know, that's going back, you know, that'd be less than, you know, as opposed to.
that'd be less than, you know, as most do.
I think it would be fair to say that actually, the booming economy in some ways also hurts us, because these more expensive, interest rates have gone up, and so in places where we have to borrow, our interest rates are higher. And so it's, unfortunately, the booming economy has not been translated into per pupil foundational levels increases, as you stated, which would be where we would see the boom, and where we would see it actually helping our district. Unfortunately, that has not been the case, and the cuts therefore have been very difficult in part for our district. So, just headwinds are almost insurmountable sometimes, but despite all of that, yeah.
Which is surreal.
And just taking the opportunity, because we are talking about this topic too, the importance of the continued advocacy in Lansing about per pupil funding. This, thankfully, this year, we did see the largest per pupil fund decrease in 10 years in a decade, but unfortunately, it still is not enough, you know, we're still way below the collaborative committee that put together what a school district should ideally give per student is, somewhere about $10,000. And so we're vastly below that, so $230 will be appreciated, would be nice to get more money. So I just wanted to add that, considering we're having this conversation about that.
Good conversation. All right, so compliance, I'm going to do the financial, I'll do the compliance audit as well. We're pleased to report no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in our internal controls. We have no material non-compliance. A lot of your federal programs, you actually spent, well, in the special education plus of this year, which is the IDEA program preschool, there's over 70 compliance steps in our program, which is crazy. The challenges are very hard, it's harder and harder to comply with it. Compliance is, it is, there's no gray area there, if you're compliant or you're not. And I'm sure each of your staff are keeping up on that, having no findings in those programs, just good work. It's just more and more rigorous for them, so a great job there, the staff. And no material weaknesses, doesn't give any deficiencies under the federal boards, and no compliance, so great job. Our required compliance, as I mentioned earlier, again, there's three levels of internal controls. There's material weaknesses, there's something in material, this could be wrong with your statements, there's those significant deficiencies, those are things that if I'm directed could become material weaknesses down the road. And what we have is not our management comments, which are really, you have the controls in a lot of areas, are opportunities to strengthen the controls we already have in place. One of the areas, we spend a lot of time doing a lot of testing, we try to make a lot of difference over here, we do a lot of the financial numbers, of course, so. One of the things we did this year, we did a deep dive into the budget, we spent a boom down to the line item level, you can probably attest to that, and you'll obviously speak to that a little bit. We went into really the details to make sure that, you know, are there any holes in this budget? And again, where were the budget changes, what's the difference in the actual, that's where we discovered a lot of these obvious initial positions and that, so that's one of the things we're looking for in our compliance, is to make sure it is properly allocated all in lines, we didn't have any issues there. We look at your competitive bid testing, to make sure you follow your procedures in the state law. Buying compliance, again, tested our transactions through the bottom programs, and didn't find anything in those at all. And we looked at all the other areas, state compliance, we have to do with your at-risk money, and things like those. We looked at decentralized cash, we always do that every year, and we looked at, so your reimbursements and some of the other things that go through that. And again, these are just really opportunities to strengthen the controls, so in a good system, these things come up, they fix. So last year, we had two, front and bottom, linked to Title I, that's at 1% of the 1% that, that was correct this year, so that was an issue here. Made a signature stamp in the buildings, one of those much different than the year before, had signature stamp, and they're using it, the principal and secretary is using it, that's good for it. So again, we identified these things that come up, and we fix them. This is just looking for, this year we only have one. We have a new GASB coming out, GASB 84, so we're spending a little more time in these activity funds, because moving forward, starting the next year's budget, you're going to see some of these activity funds, budgeted, special, and funds. And so really, unintended concerns, it's in our schools, I don't think it was intended for these activity funds, but it really does apply, we're really hoping the Department of Education will look something out of that. All the documentation testing in GASB is that we're going to have to do that, there's not much we can do with it. So we got to look at our activity funds to make sure, you know, we're controlling the money, we're going to have to adapt a budget for that, whether it's the smallest class type, and it gets big to high schools. Some of the things this year we did notice, there's, we're missing some detailed receipts for some of the transactions, we have that. Again, just need to follow our procedure policies in place, and this, again, these come up every year. The GASB 84, we want to make sure we have all the best controls in place that we have over our activity funds and things like that. And that's, again, this just creates more work for us. There's some materiality would be applied to that too, so hopefully we'll have some latitude there, that's a little great, great to hope for you. But overall, let's say, again, that's the only thing we have, and we expect to be current in that year.
Question on that?
Sure.
By activity funds, am I correct in my assumption, you're talking about things like PPA and all my grad money, and softball fundraisers, is that...
Yeah, that's all that stuff, it's a part of that. Anything we're controlling the cash for, and it doesn't even need to be necessarily us, we have an employee that's controlling the cash, we, the district, are controlling the cash, the teachers are running travel for it, that's under us. But whether they're traveling this year or next, that money's still going to be budgeted for and all those things. And that's just great.
Does that mean that we have current issue, or does that just...
No.
Is that we're looking at things...
Like, for an involvement, it's a minor compliance issue, it's not a finding or anything like that. Like, for example, a parental involvement a year ago, that was something we need to just fix, it's something to solve, hey, this is something we should just take care of. Same thing with the victim, but we have the policies and procedures in place to file, we just had a couple of instances where it was. That's, okay, that just happens to, things happen. A lot of money goes to this. And I always kind of finish on that, I'm very sure you noticed, you feel all appreciate it, I'm sure, but I did take one off here, early warning used to be on there, early warning legislation. That's fantastic news, I'm so happy you guys have done that for a couple of years. Again, they're out there trying to help, I get it, but they don't understand schools, as well as the school people do in schools. And again, there are many trends, and we're trending in the right direction, so I think that's what we're in trouble for the last couple of years. But again, we're all knowing it's a state economic political, you know, condition of our state is a challenge, we're going to have to go there. We're going to have to elect officials, there's no doubt about that, we'll be from school, less against schools, we just don't know the answer, we'll find out in a few weeks. So that's always a challenge. We're getting a lot of money right now for, from the state of Michigan, for, to help cover our retirement costs, they give us this money, and we had to send it back to the retirement system. And so that's really kind of subsidizing the rate we're supposed to pay to, to pay it on that liability over the, this 30-year period. So when you look at rising healthcare costs, you know, 70% of most actuaries, I saw 8% the other day, and another actuarial, I mean, that's, that's a lot of increase. Our retirement rate, that's 36% all-time high. Again, we're only paying the rate every year, we pay 36 cents on every dollar for retirement, including our new employees, and those are the benefits, and some are more seasoned employees, yeah. But again, the 36 cents, look at that, and again, so they're paying that rate, so we're not paying that, in fact, 30%, because not that they're paying a little bit for us. But if that changes, then the political moves, who knows? I think it's going to be all game for a little while, I don't know, legacy costs are important, but that's something we got to worry about. Again, there's a number I was looking for earlier, we've had 12% decline in students since July. And again, talk about how the results do that, and that's, that's great work, and again, that's contrary to anybody that's projecting what districts do. Stat insurance, again, helps their budget, but it doesn't help our classes, it doesn't help our students, it doesn't help, we're short on the districts, wherever the people are, we're just having trouble finding people, and it's not just teachers, you know. My daughter's going to graduate this summer, she's going to find a job rather than easy, and she's kind of different than it was in 10 years, but instead, just teachers and plus, it's everybody, you know, and everybody's going for a higher dollar someplace, because everybody's trying to find people to retire. And then our legacy costs, we don't have to pay the pension rate, they don't have to directly pack on us, but, you know, get $165 million in pension obligation, which is ours on our books, our share of the state system. And then now this year, with GASB 75, 56% of the posted employment benefits, which is really health insurance, the health insurance for their retirees, is now on our books as well. We're still going to pay that 36% rate, and the plan is if everything goes according to oil, it'll be all good in two decades, we're all not doing it for good. That's the plan, this is the plan, I guess, and that's what, again, I think you get a lot, but it's, it's a really good issue, we're really proud of you. Any questions? One more question.
I don't, I don't really have a question, I, I, thank you, I know you serve in your own folks, we work, so we're, truly to Danielle and for you, truly to, to what's happening, but I think really the credit goes to Bill, to Danielle, and your staff, and your leadership, which extends into all the schools, and all the dotting of i's and crossing of t's, and looking at the budgets, and how can we maximize the use of the ones that we have, and so I just really think the credit goes to, to the people that are, and may have some interest in it. Right, yeah?
Thank you very much, Mr. Youngstrom, we really appreciate the consistency of your leadership as well, because you know our district well, and as an external auditor coming in, to, to have your unbiased opinion, and to have this level of, of a report coming back, which is really to say that there's, I forget the words, that you use an unmodified opinion with no material deficiencies, and what this really is, is a report card for us. It is, it is our opportunity to ensure that everybody in our community has visibility, it's transparency, it's showing exactly what our strengths are, where we've been, where we're headed, what our challenges are, and it's a report card that is an A-plus plus. So we, if you look at this, Bill, Danielle, and your entire staff, you're within 2% on a 100 million-plus budget on what you forecasted in your budget versus where you came in when you drew that line on June 30th. Incredibly impressive. Even more impressive is the short-term borrowing rates that we've been able to reduce the amount that we've had to borrow, because you've been able to, under very, very dire circumstances, and a decline in student enrollment, been able to increase our fund balance up, and we have an opposite, having an upward trajectory on that, and we have a downward student count. Very difficult to do, as you said, Mr. Youngstrom, but people don't typically see that, and so again, to reiterate and to share the comments, that is stellar work. You know, everybody in the audience, your eyes sort of glaze over when we talk about money, but without, without this, nothing else would be possible, so just fantastic financial stewardship from our district. Thank you for the audit, thank you for the transparency it provides to our community, and we just really appreciate the work that you've done, and that you have done to make this possible, so thank you.
Any other comments? I'm sorry about saying grace, but the grace has to go to the Board of Education, because people ask me, what's the role of Board members? There's a great real roles I have. We have Board members, and one is to set a budget, keep this district financially healthy, and to have, and to have an auditor tell them that we should feel good about our health, financial health, is an element of the Board, because basically, I'm sorry, we made the decision so well, this budget should operate. I hate to be the historian, but I'm not sure, the past two or three decades, we've had a fund balance anywhere more than 7%. Good times or bad times, what do you recall the past three decades? But to not be at 6.3, or 1.1, is a result of hard work of this Board of Education. And, you know, I agree that finance firm has had a great job, and unfortunately, they're the only department in this district that we hire an outside company to come in and look up your shoulder and tell me precisely, by detail, what are you doing? So my compliments to you, Bill, that people look up your shoulder, you did a great job. I just want to thank this Board, because we're not known with our decisions, I'm sure there's going to be some in the future to maintain healthy deals, but I'm glad that we're now currently in a healthy, fairly healthy situation. Considering all the facts that we've talked about, student population, funding, things that totally missed laid out of this Board's control, so we appreciate that. Bill, any comment?
Yeah, we start off pretty quick, just with Dave coming in here, I just, usually we take an opportunity to thank our staff, and like to take the opportunity to thank Danielle and her team as Director of Finance and Budget, which don't probably realize that we implemented a random system for the start of this, not this fiscal year, no, the one that just was audited. She spent a year prepping for this, and when we went live July 1st, things went perfectly, it was a great rollout, and then she was able to end the year with, we removed the payroll modules and HR modules towards the last three, four months of fiscal year, and, and so everything rolled out, everything came through with these financial statements, and obviously, when I was gone, Danielle did an outstanding job with making sure, you know, that this audit was completed, and she put the financial statements together, pulled this all off with her team, and so it's a great job, and congratulations for a good year.
Thank you, it was important, practice that conversation with Dave when he was temporarily gone, because as a Board member, my concern is, you know, we changed that role, what does that mean to me? Me as a Board member, any sort of really option that, from day to day, that goes on regardless of who's in that chair, who's in that desk, is still a recurring one, so if you're right, staff, staff goes on without you, right? So, thank you. So now we are moving to consideration of purchases.
Superintendent, yes?
Yes.
Superintendent's recommendation 42-18-19, contract award PAES lab for light tracks program. Administration recommends the award of a contract for the purchase of Practical Assessment Exploration System, also known as PAES lab. Bids were processed through open schools as a county-wide initiative. The system will provide curriculum and equipment to the light tracks program, providing development in following career pathways, consumer service, construction, industrial, processing, production, business marketing, and computer technology. The recommended contract award is with Talent Assessment Incorporated for a total contract award amount of $25,672. The funding source for this is the 2018-19 IDEA federal grant, passed through Oakland Schools and ISO move.
If they vote in support, any comment or questions? All's favored. Close motion passes six, here.
Superintendent's recommendation 43-18-19, contract award for the partial roof replacement of Durant High School and Pierce Middle School. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the awarding of a contract for the partial roof replacement at Durant High School and Pierce Middle School to new crane roofing. Total award amount is $407,500. The funding source is the 2016 Bond Series II and ISO move.
If they vote in support, any questions? So Bill, we remodeled personally recently, but we do roof set pieces, correct?
Correct, this is 8,250 square foot section.
It's a different piece of roof than we...
Yes, yes, it is. I think last year we replaced, I can't remember the square footage, but I quoted another section of roof over there, and those, those go periodically through cycles. We got our, we got a good buyout of this because of warranty, it's Spider Bag in 1998, the roof was actually 1983, so I think we've got our value out of that roof, so.
Who did the roof back in 83?
I don't know, but I wish you...
Is there any concern about having the same company do both roofs prior to the change in weather, or have we worked with them before?
New Crane has done quite a few roofs, in fact, and then most are both, we do, we think, obviously, they're a good company, as well. Both of them were familiar with our school's demands, accrues to be able to pull off the job before winter, so.
Thank you. All's favored. Close motion passes six, here. Next, we move to audience comments on non-action items. You can go to that microphone over there. Sally Hart, please.
Good evening, my name is Sally Hart, I had plans to address these at the last board meeting, which was canceled, so I was going to ask for another five minutes. We'll see. My first issue is on transportation, and I will recap the story that Mom Julie Jostling told at that previous school board meeting. Three freshman boys at Mont, her two twins, and a friend were not notified of their bus route. Julie found the information from the friend's sister, who was a junior and had been notified. The driver didn't even have these three boys listed on his route sheet. It took Julie 21 calls to transportation on Tuesday, before her question was finally answered, before someone answered the phone, and answered her question about what bus boy should be on, and everything else. Superintendent Wonderlet's response during the superintendent's report referenced that approximately 50% of high school students end up not riding the bus, and there is a computer that is used to draw the most efficient bus route for home student addresses. Superintendent Wonderlet... Superintendent Wonderlet totally ignored the fact that these boys' names were not even on the bus driver's list of passengers. The computer was not invented just last year, and this technology is not new. School districts have been plotting bus routes this way for years. The problem lay somewhere else. The euphemistic "glitch" was mentioned. I have heard estimates that there were over 800 students not provided bus routes or numbers information before that first day of school. Now, the first day of school gives only one first day each school year, and it's the first and only time to make a good impression on students and parents. But who knows what the reason was for the disastrous start to this school year? I would hope the administration has done their due diligence with the route pause analysis to find the source of the error or errors and communicated the source to the Board of Education. Right now, the past is in the past, and I would like to focus on resolving the problem for the 2019 school year. Again, there is only one first day of school every year, and it would be, it's very bad to start off with parents battling to try to find out information for their students. I believe next year in 2019, the school board should have on the agenda for the first meeting of August, a report from Transportation detailing the process in getting routes and students in order. If this information is not complete on August 1st, which is, would be the first meeting, an update would be given at the regular board meeting on August 15th. Will one person in Transportation be responsible for assuring that this work has been done and verified? If the work is not complete by mid-August, the August 15th board meeting, the superintendent and board will be notified when it is complete, and all parties, parents, have been notified of the bus routes and numbers. As Julie said in when she spoke, they went into Labor Day weekend, apparently knowing stuff was wrong, and nobody stayed over to try to make sure that everything was done properly. This is micromanaging, I admit. However, the Transportation Department has demonstrated that it needs this strict oversight in order to get the job completed. Again, I will repeat, the first day of school sets the tone for the year for both students and parents. There is only one first day of school every school year. Let's do it right in 2019. My second issue, I am concerned that during the budget meeting of June 26th, when Superintendent Wonderlet's performance was evaluated and his contract was extended for a year, a very short six-day evaluation period was used rather than the three-week period that the Michigan Association of School Board feels is adequate. Three times, the question was raised, why was this evaluation period shortened? President Timmelsbach ignored the question, and an answer was never given. I would appreciate any board member who may have the answer to this question to communicate this to me after the meeting. You have my green card up there with all my contact information. We, the voters, elect school board members to represent us in setting policy and overseeing operations of the school system. The board hires a superintendent to run the day-to-day operations of the school system and reports back to the board. Ultimately, superintendent and the board are...
It's time for your five minutes.
May I continue since I could not speak at the last meeting?
You were telling, you spoke at the last meeting?
Pardon?
You spoke at the last meeting.
The meeting two weeks ago was canceled. I was prepared to speak then, and I've added to my comments since then.
Well, nobody spoke at the last meeting, nobody had, correct?
I, I understand. I would have been within the five minutes, then I would have added more comments. I would have had different comments at this meeting.
I appreciate, I appreciate your comments. That's your five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next is Dave Latimer.
I think that's going to go, she's...
I was going to call her next, but...
Well, she's...
She's okay.
She has her preference.
Hello. Hi. My name is Isabel Latimer. I'm a parent in the school district and also a former employee of the Paracro School District. Members of the board, I've stood before you to speak in the past. One of my proudest memories of sitting in a board meeting is mom, was the meeting where my daughter's destination imagination team was recognized for attending locals, and at the same meeting, my son's robotics team, Team 3098, was here to talk about their achievements of the season. They cannot have a more fulfilling feeling than our school district's truly striving for greatness than that, seeing both my friend and Dave wanting to think. Today, I come to you not in celebration of our students' accomplishments and achievements, but a disappointment and disbelief. As a former employee of this district, I witnessed firsthand how amazing the staff, teachers, support staff, administrators can be when they are at their finest. They are all very hardworking, talented, dedicated people with a passion for teaching, guiding our youth to do the best that they can be. Although we've had few residents in the past couple of years, they have not shown, they have not shown our district the best light. I believe that everyone works diligently every day to find resolutions to those issues, and they continue to work hard on maintaining a safe and effective learning environment where our students are inspired, educated, and empowered to be ready for their futures. This is why I'm here today. I am sure that you're all aware that the Kettering's captain, robotics team, Team 3098, lost their lead mentor when Mr. Stephen Snipka made the decision to accept a teaching position at OSTC. Our loss was truly their gain. For the past three years, my son is a proud member of Team 3098. It was more than a varsity sport, it was family. Even during the offseason, the members of this team continued to chat with each other about the upcoming year. For my son and about 10 others, it's their senior year, one of the most important years that they will remember of their high school years. They were really looking forward to this season after winning state champions last year. Over time, 10 years established, state champions last year. In fact, my son, he'll work with his mentor during the summer in his free time. Quite honestly, I've never seen him so dedicated to anything. It was an extremely sad day in our household for the end of August when we received an email from Mr. Snipka explaining that after much thought and deliberation, he had decided to take the new position. As a teacher myself, I was so happy for him because I'm familiar with OSTC because my son is a student there as well. I could see the potential in his move from this position here to this position there, and who couldn't be happy to see somebody make a move in their job that leads to an increase in pay and dissatisfaction? We teachers are no exception to that. I'm a firm believer that things happen when they do, for reasons sometimes beyond our understanding. So while I'm happy professionally, I was sad for our robotics family because I knew that there was only a slim chance that he would be given the opportunity to return as our lead mentor. We all kept the faith that our district would do what was best for our team and students. After all, he had stated in his email to all of us that his goal was always to try to continue to run Team 3098, whether it was for one season, on a transitional stage, or for several years to come. He now leave up on our kids. I'm disappointed that our district did. While change is never easy, we understand that a new mentor was a possibility depending on who applied for the position in addition to Mr. Snipka. It was being clear to everyone that the timeframe required to wait was due to the employment contract within the district. We waited, and our students waited. As deadlines approached, we began to worry that their sponsorships, if we did not find someone to move the team forward. In the meantime, we remained hopeful that the district would see the value in allowing Mr. Snipka to guide a new lead mentor and not throw a new person into this position, sorry, with no experience leading a team of 40-plus students with a state championship win under its wing from last season. We hoped that the district would do what was best for the students. We hope that the district would listen to the voices of its stakeholders. We hope that they would inspire and empower our students with the passion that they had last year with even higher aspirations. I'm standing in front of you feeling depleted. Our voices fell on deaf ears of those who did not have our students' best interest in mind. In fact, in a form response letter from our superintendent, his personal feelings of dissatisfaction for a teacher who made a very difficult decision for betterment of himself and his family were heavily implied and possibly cross the lines of employee information disclosure. We read that, and we all feeling embarrassed that an administrator in our children's district would shame a teacher and a former employee that way. While on the next day, we're having to talk proudly about obtaining, can I finish the sentence? About obtaining a replacement teacher for the same position who left their own district after the school year had already started and students had already did their classes. It was extremely good for it all.
Thank you.
Can I yield my time? She's only got a couple of sentences left. I was just going to finish what she started.
I need you to come to the microphone if you want to talk, because the audience at home can't hear you from back there.
Oh, I was just going to yield my time.
No, you don't, no, I can't, David.
Oh, anyway. I'm just going to finish what she said.
So you, our Board of Education members, need to keep in mind next time someone asks, "Why do people continue to leave our district?", that every decision that is made that impacts the education of our children and their students should be made with the best interest of children in mind, or our seniors this year who have scholarships depending on the results of Team 309's 98 season, and will continue to have hope that new mentors will step up and fill the gaps left for those who will be leaving. I'm also sorry that the administration cannot see as personal or even professional issues to make these decisions with the best interest in mind. I cannot understand how the qualifications of a 19-year-old applicant were superior to those of a coach who led his team to state champions. I am certain that would never have happened in a winged football or basketball coach in the district. Being realistic, this sport is one of only sports where everyone participating has a chance to make a career out of it. It provides the voice, dignity, and backseat to other varsity sports, yet provides an experience that these students prepare with them for a lifetime. Our students and parents all know this year. To the rest of the team that may not return without leadership that is known for the past 10 years, I hope that you will find someplace else where you'll find your passion, and I remain hopeful for everyone who stays with the team that your trials and tribulations this year will not be viewed as a scar in your senior year at Federin High School. Board members, thank you for the opportunity to have our voices heard, even though we know it's probably a little too late.
Thank you. Is that greater?
Good evening. I'm here with some little tidbits, I call them. Inspire, educate, and empower. I had the opportunity to be an receptionist in the afternoon at our Prairie Administration Building, so I see the public, I see all the employees of the district who come in through various things, and I started to ask people what, what stories or little tidbits of inspire, educate, or empower they would like to share. So I had a grandmother who was so grateful that the district offers the running club after school for all the elementary kids, and almost in tears, she told me that she was so happy to be able to pay for her grandson to participate in the running club, and just really thought it was a great opportunity for him to learn exercise for the early age. Then I spoke with a Kettering teacher who helped her student with her FASAP application, want an empowerment for that girl, senior, for her entire future. This was a good call to learn to college and foresee her future. So I thought that was so powerful. And then, kind of ironically, the last thing I wanted to share tonight was about a paracro. And I had no idea that Celebrate Hope was going to be here to talk about all the things that we've been doing with the paracros and the parents and everyone. And that is a paracro who's been in the district subbing positions for many years, and she was just beside herself with joy that she was hired full-time for an EI classroom. And it was just contagious, the excitement and the joy that she felt in being able to connect with the students and for long-term, rather than just subbing, you know, here and there, just getting little bits and bobs. So that's all I have tonight, and I just wanted to bring you good stories. Have a good evening.
Anyone else like to address Board of Education?
Good evening. I'm Larry Spies. I would like to continue Mrs. Hart's statement. Her second issue, I am concerned that during the budget meeting of June 26th, when approving Superintendent Wonderlet's performance and extending a contract for next year, a short six-day evaluation period was used rather than the three-week period via MANDI SB, he was adding. Three times, the question was raised, why was the evaluation period short? President Timmelsbach ignored the question, and an answer was never given. I would appreciate any board member who may have the answer to leave this to her after the meeting. You have her contact information on the green card. We, the voters, elect school board members to represent us in setting policy and overseeing operations of the school system. The board hires a superintendent from the day-to-day operations of the school system to reports to the board. Ultimately, the superintendent and the board are answerable to us, the voter. If we want to improve the functioning and transparency of the school board, I, we can vote for change. Two school board member positions are on the November 6th general election ballot. If we want different results from the school board, we, the voter, must vote for different. Thank you.
Anyone else like to address Board of Education? With that, we move to discussion items, future items. We have Celebration of Learning, the Kettering Musical, information on social and emotional learning, information on the Honor of Community Health, who will take action on the Kettering point-of-sale computers and registers. Under any Board of Education reports.
Kind of feels like a agreement. Remember the TV show Dallas? That year, they, how do you leave? I can't remember all a lot of it. Then the next season, we start off, and you know, we're there, and it's happy. Really, it was so good to see you.
I just wanted to touch on a couple of things. I had an opportunity yesterday to go to the Oklahoma School Board Association, presentation on cybersecurity on behalf of one of the school this year. Just wanted to give a brief report of some of the information that I have and share with the board and the public. So very eye-opening. It was something I walked into and wasn't sure that I would, what I was going to get, but I learned a lot about the importance in this day and age of how our information can be hacked, and that the school district is particularly important to us. They had cited that larger organizations like a school district that do get hacked or their employees get hacked, or even their students' information that get hacked, can have huge consequences. On average, it can cost an organization up to $7 million, and the liability issues that can be posed to school districts, and they cited a number of cases where this is actually happening. The number of identification information on children is on the rise, and it causes approximately 15% of identity theft. And so, when somebody hacks into a school, they will get access to that information. They went over a number of things that, you know, were, I had heard about, but I never really knew a whole lot about, phishing scams, malware, and ransomware. And they had shared an instance where... And they had shared an instance where, in a larger organization, actually, what ransomware is, is that, you know, the, your systems infiltrated, you know, by this bug that comes in that generally comes from a point of entry from an employee in the district. And when that happens, it freezes up all of the information in the entire network. They cited an instance where this happened in an organization, that the largest ransom was paid for a ransomware incident recently, which was a little over $1 million. So it means the organization had to shell $1 million right there just to get all of the information hacked because their system was infiltrated. And so it just reminded me how important it is that we are cautious of what we're doing. It opened my eyes into my own employment, and it really made me realize why there are so many blocks when you're trying to download an app or it says you have to have administrative rights, because that is the main point of entry for malware and these, and for your systems to get infiltrating through there. So it was very interesting. It was presented at the Oakland Schools by Oklahoma School Board Association. There is a challenge in the Waterford Township Library, which is quite awesome, and I think it connects very well with the Waterford Roots Program. So they have what's called the 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten Challenge. And what the Waterford Township Library does is challenge kids that are gonna be entering kindergarten in the near future to read 1,000 books before they get to kindergarten. And it's quite awesome. So my daughter does Waterford Reads, and now she's doing the 1,000 Book Challenge. And basically, the way that it works is you go to the Waterford Township Library and get a little one. You can get a form, and then every time you read a book, you can fill out a form. Or you can download the app. And if you download the app, you can actually scan the books that you're reading, which is awesome. So we did that. We have the app on my wife's phone. We scan the books. Every night, we read books. When you hit 100 books, you get a prize. You turn in your 100-book proof, and you get a free book. Every time you hit 100, you get a free book. And when you get 1,000 books, you get your name on the All-Star Wall in the Township Library, and you get a book bag. So it's really cool, and they, some of the rules, you know, for the parents that are interested in doing it, is that a book is a book. If you read the same book four or five times over, it counts. And I can attest to that, I have a four-year-old who's very hyper, and every night when it's time to read the books before she goes to bed, it's all about, you know, how many books can we read? We usually average about five. And then, you know, doing the whole scanning process, and then she's trying to get to that 100 so she can get her first prize. So it really meshes well in getting our younger populations here ready for kindergarten. So when they come to the Waterford School District, we can build on some of the things that the parents have been doing at home. So it's a really fantastic thing, and I would encourage any parents with little ones to participate in it. Lastly, the next month, I'll be going to the Michigan Association of School Boards Conference. I'll give a report when I get back from that at the following board meeting. And the number of workshops that I'll be able to attend are on student literacy, board leadership, and school board superintendent and community participation, how we work together collaboratively for the betterment of our communities. And other things, some of the other seminars that I'm gonna have an opportunity for us to paint in are open, information about open meetings and records, gender equality, issues with accurate students, cultural competency in special education. And I'll be representing the Waterford School District at the delegation, which is the opening night of the actual conference. And every school district has somebody that they nominate to represent their district. And it's basically like an open debate where we have a set of bylaws that they put up on a giant screen like that in the conference room. And there's hundreds of school board members from all the way up to the UP, down here to Metro Detroit, Michigan. And they go through the bylaws, and they start citing, are there any things in the MASP adopted bylaws in terms of directions that they give the school districts and things that are best practices that you would like to change? And people get up there and there's a debate, and they change things. And last year was the equal versus equitable language and whether we should include that. So it's always, you know, very enlightening and an opportunity to meet other board members from across the state and see what they're doing, the latest innovations in school districts. So I'll be back with a report on that when I return from the conference. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board reports? John?
Just a couple of quick things. First of all, I wanna thank the Waterford Foundation for Education. They are, again, just doing extraordinary things in our district for our students. They've been busy in our building right now, doing an employee pledge drive. And so we also want to thank our very, very generous employees who, year over year, over year, over year, consistently support that, the Waterford Foundation. Right now, they're also working with, to have our seventh-grade students be able to go see the Kettering production of Bright Star, and for our elementary students to be able to go to Kettering to see Charlie and the Chocolate Factory. These are field trips that are made possible through the foundation, through the Mary Lou Simmons Legacy Endowment. Anyone who knew Mary Lou Simmons knows what an extraordinary, extraordinary woman she was, and the fact that she is able to continue to give to our community in this way through this legacy is incredibly powerful. There is a dinner at Heroes on Thursday, October 18th, which is tonight, and Thursday, November 8th, that if you stop by, I have some coupons here. It is a fundraiser for the Waterford Foundation where Heroes is coupling with them, and they'll donate 20% of your purchase to the Waterford Foundation for Public Education. So I just wanted to give them a shout-out and thank them. Wanted to wish our juniors and some seniors good luck on our ACT tests that are taking place at the end of this month. A lot of stress for our high school students, and it's a lot of pressure to take one test, but I think it's something I bet a lot of you have been through and can appreciate, so I just wanted to wish them good luck. And then I really struggled with whether or not I wanted to, wanted to share my next comments, but I'm gonna go ahead. I want to say that through my 10 years on the school board, I have always, always found that our administration, our teachers, our staff members work exceptionally hard to address community concerns. They do it professionally, they do it promptly, and they do it with respect. Tonight, a couple of people came to our podium talking about an issue that occurred with our buses in early September. When that occurred, I was at that meeting, and our superintendent directly addressed those concerns during the board meeting, during comments. There were several emails that went out in response to that. Our Assistant Administration Assistant Superintendent also sent out a full explanation explaining what had happened, what we put in place so that it wouldn't happen again. Moreover, we also have a new app that we've put in place, and have even published it for the entire district to see on our flyer to track buses. And in all things, said that we recognized we had an issue and that we needed to do better, took responsibility for it, they put a plan in place to correct it, and yet we still have people that want to take that one issue and bring it as if our whole district has a systemic or pervasive problem. In any school district, and certainly a district of this size, there will be issues. To expect first-class perfection in every person, every student, every staff member, every classroom, every department, in every situation is simply an impossible standard. We certainly strive to do that, but things will happen. What matters is that we acknowledge it and that we work to address it, which we do. I understand that people are upset and angry, and when it affects your child, I have great empathy, and I recognize what that means. If we don't work to address it, I would be very concerned. But again, I have always seen that we follow up, not just with communication, but with action and putting corrective actions in place. From my perspective, if someone is looking for goodness, they will find it. And that could even, if someone come to the podium just to share a few goodness things, which I thought was really amazing. But if you're looking for fault, you will find it. And usually, in society today, you will amplify it with anger. That does nothing to create a constructive learning environment, it does nothing to move a school district forward, and it does nothing to help our staff and our students to feel empowered and good about the place that they're coming to school every day. Instead, you're tearing down the very thing that we all are here to build up. Anger is not constructive, and it does not move us forward. And so I would hope that in all things, we would work collaboratively, with respect, and with civility. Society is dependent on civility, mutual respect, and collaboration to effect positive change. Thank you.
I just want to mention that I had the honor to attend Oden Elementary Watch Dogs. It's a Dads of Great Students, amazing program. When you think about what their primary goals are, is to provide positive male role models for the students, demonstrating by their presence that education is important, and provide extra sets of eyes and ears to enhance school safety and reduce bullying. Okay, so clearly, there wasn't a teacher, administrator, well, it might have been a teacher who was a parent, but for others, it was all parent one, dads. And the dads are not knocking moms and aunts and grandmothers, they do a great job in our schools. But they felt that, especially with the ratio at home, and I think the ratio was 60 to 3, female to male, they feel as dads, uncles, grandparents, their role to be role models in schools, most of them need to take the day off, they spend the whole day at the school. They started the program last year with 25 dads. There were clearly 50-plus dads in the media attendance. So kudos to Oden communities, keep themselves healthy and safe and great community involvement. Also today, I had the honor to be, again, the host, curler at the Riverside Elementary, Go Gray, Go Blue. So clearly, a great, a lot of fun for the staff because most of the staff didn't know who was playing what and where, but it's a lot of fun. That's appreciated. So with that, we move to some more board reports.
Thank you. Let me just start with the comment about my evaluation, and that's not on the board at all. And the only person that I shared why I was late with getting my information was President Himmelsbach, who he's had to tap dance around something that I won't make public and would have to tell the rest of the board members. And if not going to, then it's really nobody's business. So I appreciate President Himmelsbach respecting that, and, you know, we ran through the short timeline, and I appreciate the board allowing me, you know, to be approved to be here again this year. So, you know, there, no one, if you ask the question why, no one's gonna know, but it's on me, it's not on any number of the Board of Education. Yeah, I want to speak to robotics for a minute, and, you know, I've corresponded with a lot of people for Kettering Team 3098. And it wasn't just the team, but it was also the classes that are also vacated by Mr. Smithgub. I have often said, I believe, probably even here at board meetings, that students looked at the course catalog, and they didn't look at the course number, they looked at who was teaching it, that it was taught by Steve Smithgub, that was the course that they were gonna take, because he was so beloved as a teacher and very successful, obviously, as a robotics coach. And I certainly didn't mean that I commended him in any way, you know, by emails or anything. I have to go back and look at myself and say, it was not my intent, in fact, I thought I was saying things like I just did about how loved he was and, you know, how abhorrent he was in the lives of students at Kettering. The fact of the matter is, he did quit, and we didn't get a reservation notice until the first week of school. And so that did put us in a bad situation. I tried to fill that position, so the new teacher only started this week. And then the new coach, we just also got, was hired, I believe, last week, got approved this week to go. The timelines that were so critical, I believe we did get the general voters funding, and we also got funding from FCA. The other fundings are being worked on. It's certainly not optimal to have a change like this, and it was not nothing we were looking for. I think we had a great working relationship with Steve, and he had, you know, done some things, the equipment in the room, we helped him out with a lot of funds, we set him up in a lot of things, because we did know that, you know, the funding of the program was important to him, and I think tried to bring as much of that funding to the program as we could do that. But again, as was reiterated a couple of times during our audit, we are one of the lowest-funded school districts in the state of Michigan, and that does not give us the flexibilities that some other places, some other places have. So, you know, I was sorry to see him go. I thought he was, you know, great for the students. Anytime I ever brought a group of people, visitors around Kettering, you know, his classroom is always one of the scots that we pay. So if I in any way portrayed him as anything other than a great teacher for the Waterford School District, I apologize for that. Couple other things that I want to talk about here this evening, and this is gonna be especially important to people who have students at Boma, Julian, Grayson Elementarys. The last two summers, we have been extremely aggressive in our construction projects. So, you know, the first summer at Donaldson Hills, stripped that building down, that was also the summer that Pierce was stripped down and turned into a new school. This past summer, we have two elementarys, we have one in Coton and then also did Mason. And so very aggressive schedules, and we were really proud of being able to walk into the school, you know, the last day of school, and in two months transform these buildings into, you know, virtually new schools with, yeah, the foundations the same, the block walls are the same, they've all been painted, everything else has been replaced. Really, truly amazing. The summer that we did down at the hills, our contractors, we had an average of 125 tradespeople working daily. This past summer, we had 85. And next summer, it's been projected that numbers are gonna be fewer because there's fewer people in the trades, and we're also gonna have a competition of the Hudson building being built, the Worthy Hill Bridge, and the train station renovation. So all of those things are gonna be taking tradespeople away from Waterford. So instead of doing total renovations all at once at those buildings, we're gonna be doing it in a two-summer stage. So first summer, the summer that will be coming up, the exterior of those buildings will be done, so the parking lots, if they're due for a gymnasium addition, any of those kinds of things outside the building, we're gonna take care of. Then the summer after that, we'll come back to those same buildings and do the interiors. So that's different than what people have come to expect this, the last couple of years. It'll be a little bit slower process, it will mess up those buildings two summers in a row. However, teachers will only have to move once still, just like they had to do this time. And that's just because we're projecting if that, going from 125 to 85, we might be going from 85 to 45, and we don't want to be in a position where later day, we've got schools that are half-done, and we can't bring kids back, you know, for a couple of months. So just wanted to put that out there. The locker room projects at Mott and Kettering are both gonna happen as scheduled, they're gonna start early, actually, April 1st, we'll be starting those projects. So there may be some changes to students' PE schedules if they have that second semester, and we may be switching the locker room that they use to the permanent locker room rather than the general locker room, because we'll be totally cutting those and replacing everything in there. And then we currently have work going on right now on baseball and softball fields, and the crew did Mott first and has moved to Kettering, and the foundation, and some of the first rows of brick are coming up on the dugouts right now. But that's a good indication, too, they only have one crew to do those. And so we some to Mott first, because Mott's had all sorts of soil problems, and we thought we'd do the problems first. Kettering's on pretty good soil, so we thought that would be an easier, quicker project to have as the second one. But there's definitely a shortage of people in skilled trades, and that's gonna impact us personally here now with the baseball softball, but also next summer, hopefully the amount of work that we're gonna be able to get done. I wanted to give you a quick update on the Anti-Bullying Task Force. We met on September 27th, and at that time, Dr. Julie McDaniel, who's worked with us from Oakwood Schools, did a presentation with some data from the surveys that we took, and gave some comparisons with, between our grade levels as well as between us and the county. So that was very interesting. A social worker group that worked this summer to create a framework for all our anti-bullying measures gave their presentation of the framework that they put together. Then Lisa McVie also spoke on the plans for this year and the future. We put together some ideas of what we'd like to, things to look like for a webpage so that everybody would be able to access this information. There was a request at the meeting to wait till their homecoming's over to get that done, so that's been worked on this week. And we have another task force meeting in November, and one of the areas on the agenda will be to, you know, take a look at the website, see what people like and don't like, and what kind of modifications people would like to see. I don't know if I committed. Couple of things, just quickly, we've got a lot of stuff happening tonight. Americana concert is at Kettering right now, and Lundy and Tanner is at Mott right now. So if you're looking for any entertainment after the meeting, go to either high school and you'll find some. Also, since our last meeting, both schools had their homecoming events, and it's not just a game, it's the dance, a whole week, whole, you know, spirit activities, pep rallies, et cetera. So a great week, obviously a lot of fun at both high schools. Wanted to give a quick shout-out to the Waterford Rotary and Metro North Federal Credit Union. Every month, they award students in our third graders in our schools with reading awards. And so just this week, just earlier this week, we were at Beaumont, and so students there, showing excellence in reading, were awarded, and every month, different elementary's visiting. It's already been done, but again, Bill McDaniel, thank you for the terrific effort. You know, to end up with 6.3 million fund balance is really nothing short of miraculous, and we appreciate all that you've done, we appreciate all the decisions the board has had to make that have not been easy. You've done a lot of heavy lifting, you guys to this point, and that is very much appreciated. And then one last shout-out to somebody that you didn't see at all tonight, Diana, who's subbing for Jane, and so she is in the back room there, so thanks, Jane's on vacation this week. And so Diana, thank you for everything that you're doing to keep the mics on and the cameras on and to keep it real cool tonight. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. With that, there's a need to go to closed session. I need a board to move to closed session.
Yep. I move that the board convene in closed session pursuant to section 8H of the Open Meetings Act, MCL 15.268H, to consider the written legal opinion of Clark Hill PLC. And I believe we'll do that by roll call vote. Oh!
Probably.
Or, or, in an idea. All right, call call. Petrusia?
Yes.
Thinking, yes, in the spot, yes. Tories?
Yes.
Southern?
Yes.
Halt.
Yes.
We will, we will be good.